Forest Avenue?
I'll read it.
Continue cases, item number seven, 3214A, 2560 Forest Avenue, Staten Island.
Good afternoon. As a point of clarification, this site is not located adjacent to the hollow.
It's not.
Yes. In all seriousness, the review session, there were some issues raised with respect to the Department of Transportation letter. Continuing a pattern, DOT sent a letter to us late last evening. I'm not sure if the Commissioners had a chance to review it. But their letter contains still one point with respect to Elizabeth Grove Road. In response to that, we just want to clarify that this application's not seeking to put a building in Elizabeth Grove Road. It's only the subject of this application is building within the portion of Moro Street that's mapped that is this property owner's property. However, in response to the original letter from the Department of Transportation, we did provide all the sidewalks that they required, we showed the street planning, and the survey that we provided does show that the record width is 42.48 feet. We're proposing to maintain that width. There's also a note on the plan that we are proposing to maintain that paved width. The sidewalk that is requested by the Department of Transportation of eight feet virtually matches the existing survey, which shows that there's an eight-foot, it's not really a sidewalk, but it's a grass barrier. So everything is proposed to be maintained. With respect to the CCO opinion of dedication that's 39 or 40 feet, this property owner is willing to accept the 42 feet if, in fact, we built to the CCO opinion that would give three more feet to the property owner. And we're fine. We're fine keeping the 42, 48 feet. So, you know, we can respond to it in a paper submission. However, we would just say that we believe the previous plan we submitted addressed all the Department of Transportation issues, and, you know, we would be satisfied with the board making a determination.
Commissioner Montanez had a different kind of question.
Right. I believe it was only venting my frustration in that I see that it's, to me, it's poor planning that there's this large manufacturing tract past the movie theater. This would be one of the main entrances. Right now, there's only one building in the bed of the Matt Street. When you build this building, there will be two. And to me, it's poor planning, and I just feel that the DOT should act on it. But, you know, I don't fault your owner, except that I did see that when you initially put in your plans, you had a two-story building, and you were going to request a parking waiver from us.
I would say-
And I believe that's the plan that's still on DOB's website.
It may be there. Just to those points, starting with the latter, I believe the original plan with the two-story may have been for an office building, but since the new proposal is seeking retail warehouses, one story is much more conducive to a warehouse than a two-story warehouse. So that was the revision plan. And this property owner believes that, you know, using the land that they have title to, then it makes better use putting the parking on Forest Avenue, which is more conducive to commercial traffic from Forest Avenue. As far as the access, we did try the note in the last submission with the tax map, this portion of Moro Street only extends one block further to these. Granted, it's a larger block, but it dead-ends at the movie theater. So even if it were to be opened, there are very limited number of sites to which it would provide access.
Except for the fact that there is a manufacturing district beyond, behind the movie theater, which one day will be developed.
There already are developments there that have posed no issues with access. If you, I don't know how far photographs went there, but the radius map shows that there are developed sites in that manufacturing district, and to this point, they've had no issue with using Moro Street as it's currently constituted.
I was just venting my frustration.
Understood.
Okay. But I just want to clarify something. You said before that you're not actually building in the street, but you are.
No, no, no. We are definitely building within Moro. There's no proposal to build within Elizabeth Grove Road.
Far. Oh, and Elizabeth Grove. Okay. Which is there other, this was DOT's other concern.
Right. And we also believe that, you know, the questions raised, I mean, we believe our plans answer that, but, you know, further on in the Department of Buildings process, you know, DOB is going to review that also.
Right. Okay. So then, they're willing to, yeah, okay. So I think just to kind of close the loop, though, you should continue with your, and that's the condition, that you continue with your conversations with DOT to make sure that they understand that you're going to the extremes of everything that they're requesting. That way, there isn't anything that they should be concerned about because you're not proposing to reduce the sidewalk and so on, right? So in which case, then, conditioned on that, continued conversation with DOT, we can close this. And I don't think there's any more submissions because you actually did submit your responsible-
Well, just everything I stated, we'll put into paper submission.
Okay. Into the final submission. Okay. So we can close. So for a motion to close?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Okay. So then if you could just submit the final, I think you did, and you already submit everything? So, and you officially submitted it, right?
We did officially submit it, but we can do an additional just letter submission clarifying, referencing back to the sub.
Okay. That's fine. Okay. So if you do that, then I think we could have a decision on February 10? Okay.
Okay. And we can submit that this week.
Okay. Oh, and just so, submit on the third, or actually, you know what? I have this sort of new thing. I want to try it out. Submit on, because you don't have a lot to do, just submit on, oh, I have to see, we're not on the 27th anymore. Sorry, sorry. If you could submit on the second, Monday, the second? So that's, can you, all right, you have a lot to do. That's Monday. End of day Monday.
Sure. Yes. Definitely electronically, the hard copy, we can get there.
Yeah. Electronically is kind of the most important part.
Okay.
So for a decision on-
We can submit a letter the second. Sure. Okay.
Great. Item, I'm sorry. Item number eight, 9514A, 237 East 72nd Street, Manhattan. We have a request for adjournment.
Okay. I don't remember the date unfortunately. It's somewhere. Sorry. Okay. So I think other people aren't here, so, no. All right. I just want to see, so we adjourn, we could adjourn this to a hearing on March 10? Is that the one we have?
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. March 10th is good.
Yeah.
With a submission February 27th, which is a Friday. We're going to try a new experiment. All submissions must be made by close of business on Fridays, and if they are not submitted by close of business on the Friday date, you have to call and ask permission to file late because otherwise, we don't have time to review the materials. Okay? So submission on Friday, 27th, for a hearing on March 10.
Half the time, the applicants will lead anyway.
What?
Half the time, they'll lead anyway.
Right.
They're sitting right there.
I'm sorry. No disrespect to the applicants, all right? But things happen.
Jesus Christ. Item number eight, 16314A through 16514A, 502, 504, 506 Canal Street, Manhattan. This is going to be a few minutes. This is going to be a few minutes.
Hi. My name is Alan Gary. I'm representing Panti Equities and SRA Architecture and Engineering. I'd like to respond to a few comments that were mentioned in the pre-hearing. Hopefully, I can be brief. My understanding was that there was some question about the federal regulations, the federal regulations regarding historic buildings and variances, et cetera. And between Monday and now, I reviewed them in that, at that level. And under CFR, which is Code of Federal Regulations, Section 60.3, there are provisions for variances to be granted. They are made by the community, and the text and the requirements are very, very similar to Appendix G. The definition of historic buildings is listed on the local inventory with a community historic preservation program that's approved by the Secretary Interior or State Program. And Landmarks is certified by the State Historic Preservation Office. And in terms of floodproofing, you know, they talk about retrofit floodproofing for historic buildings need not be comprehensive to provide at least some degree of protection. They list five or six items, of which we are attempting to do three of them. One of them includes relocating. The LPC letter-
Well, what, are you going to go through what the three of them are?
Uh, yes. Elevating electrical and mechanical systems in utilities, using flood damage resistant materials, installing small flood walls to protect openings.
What was the last remaining one? You said relocating, then? There's only one more remaining. What is that?
Well, there's, they have elevating, they have relocating contents, they have creating positive drainage where the grade allows to drain away from the building. So the using flood damage resistant materials, filling in basements or wet proofing, or wet floodproofing basements. That means allowing the water to go in and then go out. And so we didn't fill it in. And installing small flood walls to protect openings, such as window wells.
Such as, sorry?
Such as window wells.
Window wells.
Okay. And I'm sure that if I, you know, dug into some of the other material that they have provided, you know, we could, you know, we could see where in the federal regulations, you know, some of the things we were doing were listed. I mean, we've, you know, we've looked at this building with flood people, we've looked at this building with Landmarks, and we think we have essentially exhausted all the things that we can do with it. The other thing that came in or came up was the letter from Landmarks, which I believe is, has three points in it. The first point is, is that the, that the proposed small flood shields that we're proposing, if they are channelless, they have no effect. If they have channels, they can review them and probably approve them. The second thing that the letter talks about is the possibility of changing the facades or the openings, and they said that they would find that very intrusive. And the third thing talks about the use of an exterior flood barrier system, which in addition to them saying does not affect them, when we met with them, they said they have used it on other buildings. So at this point, we have an exterior flood barrier system that's put up, and then we have the shields that are put in the window and door openings.
I just want to be clear about LPC, though. LPC only looks at whether you're having a negative impact on the historic property, right?
That's correct.
And the flood barriers that it's permitted have been for commercial properties, and that's the issue here, is that you're changing the use, right?
But to them, it's the building.
They don't care what the use is.
It's the building.
Yeah. For them, they don't really care what the use is behind it.
Okay. The other item that was brought up was the emergency action plan. And, you know, we, our goal in the emergency action plan, I stated, I believe it's, I believe it's explicit enough in our emergency action plan, but if it's not, we will make it more explicit. If it needs to be graphically emphasized, we will. As soon as there is an emergency flood notification, the people will be evacuated. There is no question about it. And we can either provide the graphics or the lease terms that, you know, you want included in the leases, or the rental leases, or the sign that's posted in the mailroom.
It needs to be extremely specific, instructions to the tenants about exactly what they have to do to ensure the, let's say, the safety of the contents of the building prior to evacuation, and what they should do if they're not going to be there during an emergency, et cetera, et cetera. Because I'm really concerned, people are not home during the flooding, and so evacuation is foregone conclusion. They're already not there, but they're also not there to install any of the floodgates. What are they supposed to do? Right?
Well, the point of, you know, the, you know, we're asking, I mean, it's conceivable that who is occupying the buildings when we're asked to evacuate is not capable of putting in these panels.
Another, right.
Listen.
Not handy.
Could be me.
Not strong enough. Yeah.
So, really, the goal is that, you know, listen, most of the people probably will be, these are really designed for homeowners. That's the intent of it. They're light enough, they're easy enough. So we figure that most of the time, that'll be taken care of. In addition, the owner will then be able to go there and put those shields in, and then put his flood barrier up as well. And I think that, you know, what you, when you were making your request, I'm thinking that we really need to, you know, as part of something explicit, part of the emergency plan, what the homeowner should do, I think that there may need to be a meeting between the homeowner and the owner and saying, listen, if there's an emergency, I want you to move this piece here, and I want you to move that piece there, and make sure you do this, and what are my plans, and make sure I got two cats, make sure they're out, you know, if I'm not here. So I think there needs to be some communication. I mean, if this was a multifamily dwelling and I had 100 tenants, it would be unreasonable. But I have three, I have three tenants.
I think that the evacuation of the tenants and the notice given should be a condition of the lease.
Absolutely. There's no question about it.
And I think your language, you talk about an emergency operation plan as an integral part of any building. This, we're talking about these buildings.
Okay.
And how it is imperative and it's required. And along those lines, I still think you have to state who is going to be your registered professional who will be in charge of supervising everything.
Okay.
In terms of, you know, where the panels are, where all this material is, inspecting that material, supervising the installation, and then afterwards, you know, cleaning them, getting them properly restored.
Yeah. We have a lot of, we have a lot of technical work yet to do.
You should put that in your plan, and it should be very demonstrative.
Well, there's a-
Not general.
There's a, there's a, part of the conditions here of the plan, or there's a maintenance and inspection plan, which includes essentially a fire drill. Once a year, they're supposed to get a crew, come in, set it up, train, and take it back. That's part of the maintenance and inspection plan. It's part of it.
Okay. But I think to Commissioner Montanez's point, we don't want to know the general, what it is you're going to do.
No, no.
We want to see it. We want to see the writing.
I can definitely make it much more specific.
Yeah.
Who is the person who's responsible? Who is the licensed professional who is responsible?
Okay.
Right.
You have to state that in the emergency plan, and I think you should have, you know, you should make a listing of what the equipment is, and notify people ahead of time that their property might be damaged.
Right.
Well, this, this plan, whatever is listed in this document, this, you know, this three-page document that I've done, will be attached to the lease, will be posted in the mailroom.
No, but you're not hearing. No, no, no. Not that three-page document.
No, no. An expanded one.
That's modified to respond to all of these concerns.
Yes. It's got to have phone numbers, and professionals, and-
And a list of the equipment, and what the procedures actually are, so a person can understand how to do them, who they're supposed to call, the phone numbers, what happens in the event that they're not home, how it will be addressed, all that stuff. Okay? And you need, I mean, this is still very tricky and makes me still uncomfortable. So I, we really want to see that the tenant is fully aware of what they need to do. And, you know, I'd hazard to say that because this is the first time we've been asked to do something like this. If this turns out to not be a successful solution, I don't have a problem with retracting this approval. So it seems to me, maybe this should be some kind of conditional approval once we finally get to a point where we say you've introduced all of these things, because you can easily retract and make this a commercial space if this isn't working. So if you came back in two years, and it turns out there was a storm here, and the tenants came and testified that all their stuff was wrecked, we didn't find a good solution, and you got to put a boutique on the ground floor, and go back to Landmarks and say, I need another door. Like you used to have.
May I ask just a term for this?
Yeah. Right.
Real term?
Some kind of a term, I would say, because this is an experiment.
I'm sorry.
It would be an approval subject to a term of years.
Okay.
So it's, so essentially, and it's super conditional on all these things that we're going to be listing, because we don't know if these are going to work. It's sort of a disaster, maybe, that, you know, potentially-
We're really only going to know if we get a, even a small flood would work, would help us, you know, but we'd have to see something.
Well, help to figure it out, but I don't want the tenant to be the guinea pig. So the idea is that we're going to make this place as sealed as humanly possible, and the tenant as aware as possible. We want to see the lease that you're going to give the tenant, we're going to want to see the signed lease once the tenant moves in, to know that, and the tenant has initialled the riders, because we want to know that this hasn't been snuck under, and the tenant has no idea that they're living with their Persian carpet at risk, kind of thing.
Okay. I mean, my summary, my summary was going to be that the variance is going to require the owner to do three things: notify, evacuate, and protect. And if we, if he was not asking for this variance, and he had raised the kitchen three feet, he wouldn't have to tell anyone that they were in danger, he wouldn't have to tell them to get out, and he wouldn't have to protect the building.
If what?
If, if we had, if he had put the commercial back, if he had raised the kitchen, if he had said, we don't want to go to BSA, he would not be obligated to do the things that I believe, okay, are appropriate. Notify the tenants beforehand, make sure they get out, and protect the buildings.
Right. But that's, then you're talking about a commercial tenant, right? That's a commercial tenant occupying that ground floor.
If I put even a commercial tenant, I wouldn't have to tell him.
Correct. But the commercial tenant, there's a public policy view that the commercial tenant is in a better place to afford, unfortunately, damage from a storm-
Do you agree with that?
Than a residential. I do, because it's all my stuff. It's all my worldly possessions. I have business insurance for my little store, and ideally, I get flood insurance, I get all that stuff, and I understand that when I install my business in this heavy flood district, it's kind of worth it from a business perspective, because all the time that I'm not at risk, I'm selling shirts for a lot of money and so on, right? As opposed to all my stuff, my personal belongings that will be destroyed, and I'll be homeless, where there's a huge public policy preference for humans not to be homeless, as opposed to storekeepers being inconvenienced, and it's terrible, but what, you know, as opposed to no one using those levels. And by the way, you know, contemporary flood regulations, no one would be using those levels if you're at, if you're building a new building, right? It'd be parking.
Right.
So just let me ask, in the other applications of the barrier system that you talk about, I don't know if you've done any research on those applications, and does the city have any oversight on those at all? Does the Building Department make sure that once a year, you're on the date?
Yes, yes, yes. They're filed, they're filed with the Building Department. There's an engineer who files for it. The openings in the sidewalk are filed with Department of Transportation, okay? That pin it down.
That's true. Oh, you're talking about the barrier?
Yes. That's what I'm talking about. Yeah. Right? Yes. It's, it is totally regulated.
And does the Building Department inspect, or in any, you know, yearly fashion to make sure that you have-
My gut, my gut, my, the role of the, what the Building Department now has been doing is they've been sort of farming out all inspections under what's called TR1s. So they have a professional who's licensed in some ways. Inspect welding and steel.
Understood. But do, do you have to submit a TR1 yearly, or you just do it-
No, no.
Just at the installation?
I'd have to find out. I'd have to find out. But since we're installing it, we're, we're setting it up yearly, it probably wouldn't be a problem for us to submit that.
Because then you have, you have it on record that you had a professional, you know-
Right.
Okay, this every year.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So then that might be part of it, that we have a conditional annual testing of the flood barrier where you install it, you get an engineer to sign off on it, that same engineer is responsible to sign off on it.
Right.
And hopefully, you never get to test it with an actual flood.
Right.
Not likely on Canal Street. Anyway.
And any changes that have to come back.
Sorry?
Any changes to the plans that we approved.
Right. Have to come back. That's right. So if the engineer says it's a deficient system, and we're needing to move to a different flood barrier system, you're going to come, have to come back to get a letter of substantial compliance or otherwise, right?
Makes sense.
So then, there were some other questions, though, that I had, which was, and these are questions that we raised earlier. So AquaFence is part of the proposal. You're going to be doing both gates and barriers.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
So my question had to do with what happens at the crawl space where water is trick, I assume this is also, you have underground water sources in this area. These are areas where there's a lot of sump pumps.
We have, we have waterproofed the cellar.
The cellar been waterproofed?
Yeah. That's all waterproofed. The cellar, the cellar floor, up the walls, up and into the wall.
So you're saying it's been, so it's essentially been dry floodproofed, so there's no reduced seepage horizontally?
Yes. We're trying to reduce the, we won't know until we're tested.
So can you provide the specifications on what you use for waterproofing, for dry proofing? Because that's also in the FEMA regs on the kinds of materials that should be used for dry floodproofing. And I assume that LPC also has to sign off on that, because you're treating the original historic brick from the inside unless you're building something?
No, no. We got, we have, we have foundations on the inside, and the floor is new, and the cellar floor, they don't, they don't care about the cellar floor.
Okay.
Right? It's a bathtub.
Right. You have new foundation?
We have some, yeah, we have some new structural stuff supporting the new-
Because they actually do care about what you do on the interior. It affects the integrity of the structure.
We, yes.
Make sure that they're okay.
Yes. We, they are concerned about the structural integrity of the exterior.
No, of the, of the interior, because it affects the exterior. So that's why LPC requires interior approvals, because if you did something, for example, used a material that decays the stone or the brick, because it's not intended for that use, that would be a thing that LPC would object to. So make sure you get signed off on the material you've used or are using for the dry floodproof.
Okay.
Okay? Because it also might spall, because it's not compatible with the materials, and spalling would be a total drag, because that's the end of your waterproofing. Okay? And then, so if you could also, in your statement materials, provide us with the specs on that information, and then in the statement, say that you created this bathtub condition to whatever height that is. Is it to design flood elevation? Is it the, yeah, what level have you dry proofed? It should be probably to design flood, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then, have, include, oh, utility entry points? Again, I'm relying on FEMA guidelines. Utility entry points are supposed to be sealed?
Yes.
Backflow preventers and sump pumps?
Mm-hmm.
So provide all that information, that you provided all that stuff? An internal drainage system? I'm assuming like, for instance, your crawl space might have a drainage system. That might be a way of dealing with it.
No.
So then how do you deal with water that comes in?
It has, that's the sum.
The sump pump. Okay. What do you do? And then, does the sump pump have a backup? Because that's my, the favorite thing is the sump pumps get flooded, and then they stop. Think that. Experience that.
We, the sump pump is go, the only thing that the sump pump can do is drain water that seeps in.
Right.
We cannot drain the Atlantic Ocean.
No, no, no. No, no, no. The sump pump, the point is that what happens often is the sump pump gets burned out, because it like didn't click on, so you should have a backup sump pump.
Okay.
Okay, and then, I think that, with this proposal or not, and?
Okay. I just have one question. Practical difficulties? Yeah, don't they need to make that binding? Okay, okay. Um, yeah, if you could just adjust, address your practical difficulties and hardships that are requiring that you make this request, that we vary this, because that's actually one of the findings of the waiver, and you haven't addressed that. Like, what are the practical difficulties that prevent you from using this place in accordance with the regulations?
We discussed the size, the access from above.
Well, for commercial use.
For commercial use.
You've discussed the difficulty range.
The size, the access, the, you know, what it does to the, what it does to the residential space by, you know, limiting the residential. I mean, this, this deal, the amount of money that they're putting, going to put into this needs to have a return. And otherwise, we go back to what these three buildings were, you know, two years ago, which was ready to fall apart. And, you know, the concept of the variance is to give something to somebody so that you get something in return. And I believe what we're getting in return is we're getting the continued maintenance and protection of these buildings.
So, you're suggesting that by having this commercial aspect, you'll be able to defray some of the expenses of stores?
No, no, yeah.
Residential.
No, by, residential. Residential.
Commercial in that it's a return on investment.
When we, when we got to these buildings, there were 11 apartments, of which three were occupied above, and the commercial space had been vacant for decades, decades.
Okay. So, if you could take all what you said and turn it into a response to one of the requirements for the waiver, which is that you must demonstrate that there are practical difficulties and unnecessary hardship in, in complying with these regulations that lead you to, to request this waiver, okay, or these waivers?
And for guidance, you can look to prior cases by this board.
I'm sorry?
If, for guidance on the practical difficulty issue, you can look to prior cases this board has decided and granted, if you want some ideas on how to describe the practical difficulty.
Few that might send you the word.
And then finally, Madam Chair, I think maybe a suggested, suggested list of conditions with his next submission that then the board can review and add to and amend and discuss at the next hearing.
List of conditions, but you're going to be giving us essentially what will be the lease rider?
Mm-hmm.
Which is explaining all of the protections that are going to be instituted on behalf of the tenant, and all of the things that the tenant will expect to take place in the event of a flood. And, you know, what is, what is the event of a flood warning? Like, you have to actually describe that. When the weather report says a hurricane is coming, out you go. Is that it? It's just saying, you know, hurricane whichever is coming and you have to evacuate? Or is it that the weather report is for something about floodwater is rising?
Actually, there is a specific, in the emergency action plan, talks about, we will emphasize it and review it, I'm sorry, it's here. National Weather Service Office has flood warnings. So, it's National Weather Service issues, that's it.
Okay, but flood warning, is it just flood warnings? Is that the term? Or is it flood warnings of a level of X? I mean, I don't actually know.
I think it's just, I think it's just a flood warning, you know, the conditions.
Okay. Does that mean a lot, might mean a lot of evacuation on the port?
Exactly.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't have, rainfall is not going to do it. It's got to be winds. Because it's really the, it's the Atlantic Ocean that's flooding.
Well, actually, there weren't strong winds in Sandy. It was.
Well, that, yes, and the winds blew the water onto the island.
Actually, was it that? I thought it was tidal, actually.
I think it was the combination of the tides and the wind.
Yeah. Anyway, not a meteorologist, and maybe this isn't a good time of year to be a meteorologist, but, okay. So, if you would just define very clearly?
Okay.
The, the trigger moment, so the tenant is aware that, you know, anytime there's a national floods, flood warning?
Okay.
Or local flood warning? Okay. Okay, so I think that's actually still a lot of work to do.
Mm-hmm.
Because we'd like the next submission to be really complete.
Okay.
So, not a kind of a general, this is kind of generally what I would do, this is actually what I would do.
Okay.
So, how about a month?
Mm-hmm, sounds good.
Okay, so can you submit also on February 27?
That's a Friday?
That's a Friday?
Okay.
For a hearing on March 10?
March. Okay, good. Less than two hours.
New cases, item number 10, 13111A through 13311A and 15914A through 16114A. Arthur Kilrode and Pemberton Avenue, Staten Island.
Good afternoon, Todd Dale for the applicant. I think to start, we would just say that we understand there may be some confusion with submissions, because this has had a, a long history, these companion cases. Going forward, we'll make sure that all of our submissions dress all six applications together and try and get a little more cohesion, because we know that the original statement, I think, when it was just the houses before Department of Buildings raised the garage objections, may not have been changed or reflect the garages, but then we have the separate garage statements. But going forward, we'll definitely ensure that we respond to all six at the same time. With respect to some of the issues raised at review session, the DEP letter, we'll put it into a submission, but we will agree to amend the drainage plan, satisfying the DEP's request. With respect to the Fire Department, I actually spoke to Mr. Scududo. I know they're still going to issue a letter to us shortly. When we get that letter, we'll respond to any concerns raised by the Fire Department. Department of Transportation, the most recent letter had requested the...
So, just go back one second. So, the DOT letter, what's going on with that? Or did you already speak about that one?
We did respond, I believe, in, I think it would be the house applications, the 11, the 2011 applications. We had submitted a response showing that the request from the Department of Transportation to provide the cul-de-sac to the Ashdod standards would actually engulf the, I think it's the northern portion of the site, and we did supply a plan highlighting the cul-de-sac that it would require actually a taking of the private property that's outside of the mapped Pemberton. And we would defer to the board's decision on this case. We also referenced the previous approval. This, this site was actually subject to the application, I'm blanking on the calendar numbers now, but the 2006 approval. The prior approval involved four homes. But when that application, the GCL 35 application was granted, the board reviewed the same issue raised by the Department of Transportation, and we provided the same information, and the board agreed that providing a cul-de-sac was not appropriate at the site. We believe the conditions still hold, and we'll show on the plan that it just engulfs and it.
Did you give us a copy of that prior approval?
Yeah, in the 131.
Oh, they did?
In the 131 cases, again, our next, our next submission.
I can't find any.
And we understand, in our next submission, we'll, we'll ensure that, we'll resubmit our response to Department of Transportation and that plan. We'll resubmit the 2006 approval. We'll state the, our agreement with DEP that we'll amend the drainage plan, and then we'll include a Fire Department response as warranted when we receive that letter. But we'll make sure it's all there, and we'll reference all six applications together.
But I do, I still do have a question about that turnaround. So, what do you do? You provided this photograph that was taken on a particularly busy day on that street, where there's a car coming and going, and then there's a car parked right up against the fence?
No, we, we provided this plan.
No, it was a photograph.
Well, we may have provided photographs also, I don't know if they were in response to the Department of Transportation issue.
No, it was a photograph, it was a photograph in the materials.
Just in the materials, as far as that?
And it showed a car coming and going on the street, and then it showed the fence there that says dead end or something like that. And then it showed a car parked right there at that fence. So, and then there's sidewalks and driveways and the houses busily doing housing.
I actually took that photograph.
You took the photograph. How can, how did you turn around?
I drove my car and I turned around just fine. It's a K-turn.
Didn't you go into the?
No, just did a K-turn and came back around. It's the way that this site has been for at least now almost 10 years with that dead-end site.
But that car there didn't, I mean, wasn't that car like?
I had no, I should admit, I wasn't driving like a Chevy truck, but I was able to turn around.
And what about the Fire Department? That's a concern, is the fire department truck.
Well, we'll see what the Fire Department, again, once the Fire Department issues a letter, we can respond. But we would also say, you know, referencing back to the previous approval, these issues were addressed, you know, under the 2006 approval, and substantially, the approval we're seeking has not changed, other than the fact it's changing from four buildings to three buildings. You know, the current business conditions, the property owner determined that three buildings with the garages would be a better use of the lot. But, you know, we, this is the plan we submitted response to the DOT request, which we'll resubmit, showing that any cul-de-sac to be provided pursuant to the DOT, the Ashdod standards, would, would take up the whole northern portion of the lot, or should be the southern portion of the lot.
Because we've seen like little bulbs and things like that provided, where it's certainly not, you know, a gigantic thing where the entire truck can turn around and spin and all that stuff. It's more that it provides a little bit of backing up and turning, so that you're not in the other people's driveways in order to get out.
Understandable, but that's the response that we did, because that's what they requested as far as a cul-de-sac. And as I said, you know, the board reviewed this in 2006 under the same request and found that it was not appropriate to provide the cul-de-sac. So, we rely on that previous approval, but we also rely on just this, this diagram that clearly shows that any such cul-de-sac would require a taking of the property outside of the mapped portion of Pemberton Avenue.
So, are, are you anticipating protecting the, well, I guess you need that 30 feet in front on Pemberton there. You need that 30 feet for the Fire Department, right? They require 30 feet in front of the house.
Correct.
So, conceivably, somebody could just simply continue on Pemberton, and you've got a car parked there in front. I was just concerned that there's nothing that indicates the street just doesn't continue, and somebody not paying attention is going to drive right in front of your home and ruin it, right?
I guess, except if you're coming, if you're coming north down Pemberton, you would see the garage, you would see the home, you would see, I mean, I suppose someone, I suppose someone very creative might do that. What we could do is, you know, if it makes, right under, I would say, we could, we could put landscaping in there to, to make it clear that it doesn't continue.
I mean, it just looks like it's part of the street. It looks like you could just continue right on, you know, through the house. I mean, granted, yeah, you'll see the house, but, you know, if you're not familiar.
We're willing, we're willing to put up a sign that says dead end. We're willing to put up extra landscaping to, to make sure that that issue doesn't happen.
I see the prior approval. I finally looked in 131.
As I said, because of this long history and the change of the Department of Buildings, this one's been around a while.
I think there's got to be some identification or, you know.
Sure.
And also, you're going to have a problem with that 30 feet if somebody is parked, right, on the, like, east side of the street?
And I believe that the Fire Department, I haven't seen the letter, but I'm going to guess the Fire Department's going to request that some sort of no parking sign is, and we can, we can, we can definitely make that happen.
What about the fact that it's in the 10-year capital plan?
Uh, we haven't received, what is in the, I believe it's in Arthur Kil.
Arthur Kil.
The DOT?
Yeah, it's in the DOT letter. Remember, I spoke to you about that yesterday, reminded you about that yesterday. It said Arthur Kilrode.
To double check, Arthur Kilrode, but not Pemberton, correct? And we're not proposing any construction within Arthur Kilrode that I notice, are we?
No.
So, if, if it's in the capital improvement plan and we're not proposing construction, it shouldn't affect our site, but we can review that issue.
Where are you talking about? It's in the driveway near the house. Here. This is the end of Pemberton Avenue, and this is their property. Well, the owner can keep going.
I assume you have a fence.
Well, he can't, because he needs to have 30.
I would also like to just point out that the signage for sale on the lot says pre-approved for three two-family homes currently.
It does? Well, that is incorrect. I know that the, when I was there for the last time, it said pre-approved for four. Maybe they changed the sign fairly recently. It's been, it's been a few months since I've been there, but we'll talk to the owner in a short.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Are there any speakers on this item?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I wasn't going to talk, but since you made me wait three hours.
Wasn't that interesting, though?
I, you know, I, out of everything that was said, the one thing I learned, no, 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 a Brooklyn Battery Bridge was proposed. Is that right?
Yeah.
Well, I didn't, I never knew that, and I have to read that about that tonight.
That's because Robert Moses did not like tunnels.
He doesn't.
Then Eleanor Roosevelt convinced FDR to make Castle Clinton a federal landmark.
And that was?
Because they were going to tear down Castle Clinton, they already had moved the aquarium.
Wow.
And if you read The Power Broker, it's in there.
Okay.
Which should all, that should be a reading assignment.
Absolutely amazing, anyway, yeah. The history lesson this morning was amazing. And based on, you know, what we talked about with this case, if we don't, you know.
It's not, it's okay.
The Fire Department has no objection. I don't, I haven't been able to separate the three, the, all six cases into the individual lots. I'm not identifying application number to lots, so the, the 13111s are the homes, of course, and the garages are 15914s through, 159 through 161. The Fire Department has no objection to the garages, of course, they're, you know, mated with the proposed homes. Terms of the homes, the two proposed homes on Arthur Kil, facing Arthur Kil, we have no objection. It's only the building on Pemberton. The original case was prior to the 2008, and of course, the 2014 Fire Code. So, now we have to reexamine this whole application, because there are specific requirements in terms of length of the dead-end street, street widths and so on. So, it's going to take us a little longer just to analyze. That may be an issue where we will come up with a major objections to that Pemberton proposal.
So, I just, I quite, I don't know that it's actually the mentioned here, the, the distance of the frontage.
It's not, it's not only the frontage, it's also the, I was, I tried scaling it from a whole bunch of maps, and I can't scale it. The length of the dead-end street, I, we, we don't know, so we have to do some more research.
Okay.
To see if we do have that issue about a turnaround being required, at which time we would get into the same problem that DOT is having in terms of some sort of turnaround the end of the dead end.
But in terms of the frontage of that one, I'm not even sure.
Well, the street width, I think, I think there might, there probably is adequate frontage on the property.
Frontage on Lot 38 is enough.
I, I believe so, but that's another one of the things we're looking at. So, we're looking at the frontage and we're looking at the length of the dead-end street to see if a turnaround is required by code.
Okay.
And that's where we are. So, if, if all the cases can be separated, at this point, like I said, the two Arthur Kills, there are absolutely no objections.
Mm-hmm.
And that would be it.
It's just this Lot 38 effect.
The northern, the northern lot, Lot 38.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Todd Dale, again, as I said, we, we understand the Fire Department's working on it and will respond upon receiving that letter.
Okay. Um, okay. Any other speakers on this item? Okay. So, we do, we need to wait for the Fire Department, so I don't know, do we have any other questions? No? Okay, so, I don't know, Fire Department, four weeks, okay. So, we assume we'll have the submission by the end of February, is that good? Okay, so how about, again, submission, well, you don't have a submission, we expect Fire Department will, will respond by the end of February, so we can have a hearing on March 10? Does that work?
We were going to clarify.
We'll clarify everything in the submission.
Yeah, you're going, oh, okay.
But we'll have that ready ahead of time.
Right. Oh, you could? Okay, that's terrific.
All right, well, we can respond probably within a week to two weeks after that, depending on what the board's calendar.
Okay, so, so the 15th is a Sunday, so thinking of taking the day off, okay? So, so, yeah, so for submission by the Fire Department on the 17, and then you would submit on the 27, that's a Friday?
Sure.
Okay, for a hearing on March 10. Is that good?
Yes.
Great. I'll see you close.
Thank you.
Yep.
You gone?
Zoning calendar, decision items, item 11, 186 13 BZ, 117 Gelson Avenue, Brooklyn.
Good afternoon, Frank Shalito for Arrow Water.
Um, the drawing is showing. Okay, so I think you revised the statement of facts to include an additional waiver for the distance between buildings, right?
It's been revised.
Right, okay, great, so are there any other comments on this? Are there any speakers on this matter?
It's closed.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm confused. So, for a motion to grant.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Adley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 12, 271 13 BZ, 129 Norfolk Street, Brooklyn.
Hello, good afternoon, Eric Pilatnik.
Hi, so any open issues? No, first, motion to grant?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Adley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 13, 38 14 BZ, 116 Oxford Street, Brooklyn.
Eric Pilatnik again.
Not this one, no, next one. Um, for a motion to grant?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Adley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number 14, 94 14 BZ, 1150 East 22nd Street, Brooklyn. reopening this?
Yeah, this one I wanted to reopen.
A motion to reopen? Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Adley Brown?
Aye.
And so, but actually, because of the change in schedule, the applicant couldn't come today, so we'll adjourn this. So, I don't know if they want to make a submission, though, we did have comments, and the applicant's not here, so let's give them some time to submit. So, for submission, uh, sorry. Yeah, I think we can handle that. Okay, so a submission, submission on February 13th, that's a Friday, for a hearing on February 24th.
Is this a continued hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Item number 15, 25, 125 14 BZ, 11th Avenue C, Manhattan.
Good afternoon, Eric Knowles from Goldman Harris for the applicant.
Thanks, I believe this was closed, right? And we were just waiting for environmental stuff and we're good with that, right? So then, since closed, we can make a motion to grant?
Chair Perlmutter?
I'm sorry.
Um, aye. Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Adley Brown?
Aye.
There's an E designation on the site, that's what the.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Continued hearing items, item 16, Gopos, 81 12 BZ, 9801 05 Metropolitan Avenue, Queens.
Good afternoon again, Eric Pilatnik.
Hi.
Hi, and with us here is the operator of the facility, Ken Hersfeld, and he'd like to say a few words to your board also as we go along to give you some more assurances about the operation. We attended your review session on Monday, and we, we heard your board's, what your board's concerns were, and if it's acceptable with the board, we'll just, I'll just address what you had spoken about. One of your comments related to the trash enclosure, there were concerns about how, what were we throwing away there and if there's any refrigerated storage going on, or rats or odors. There are no rats and there are no odors, and Kenny is going to speak to you about that in a little more detail, and I'm going to pass up to the board. It was good that we had a few days, we have the opportunity to come back to the board with some information for you at least, and I'm handing up a package to the board, and in that package, page two, which I'll wait for everybody to get it, and then I'll, I'm sorry, if you, the legal counsel could just share with the commissioners if you have any.
We have enough.
Okay, I think I'm short one, you had enough?
Sharing.
Good, good, good. Sorry, I didn't want the commissioners to not get it. In any event, page two, you'll see a letter from Bugban, which is the exterminating company, and what they're explaining there is that their records, at the very last sentence, our records indicate no such activity in that area or any other area in the location, and Kenny is here today to talk to you as well. There's been no problem whatsoever with anything related to vermin or anything of that sort or odors, and the reason for that is Kenny and his numerous McDonald's that they operate are all operated to a very high level of cleanliness, and it's been like that before your board, before even came before your board now, it's historically been a very well-run site, and Kenny is here, he could tell you more about what they do, but they have somebody going out to the dumpster even before this hearing, cleaning out the dumpster area constantly, washing it down, hosing it down, disinfecting it, they also, McDonald's provides them with triple-line bags automatically, so there's no leakage, they double-bag the triple-line bags, again, because they don't want, the dumpster is located within their property, and people come and they eat there, so obviously, it's not good business for them if it's a filthy mess. It is right next to the drive-through, people keep their windows open in the summer, and they don't want the odors any more than anybody else would, and there have never been any complaints about it. So, it's been operated very well, and that's what Kenny has provided to you, to help give you some more assurances. Also, page one of the handout that we passed up is a letter from Kenny, and he could speak to this too, your board had asked about moving on to the questions about the stop sign, and it turns out that the stop sign was not installed as it should have been after the last time this went through the board, and they have every intention now that you've called it everybody's intention of installing it. Kenny has set a date for the company to come on February 28th of this month, of next month, and they'll be installing the stop sign, so hopefully that will be taken care of soon. The brackets for the signs need to be removed, and he's going to be taking care of that as soon as the weather permits, I think he was meaning when the snow stops falling, but that could be done relatively soon, and he'll get that taken care of, so probably before your next hearing, we'll be able to give you some photographs of that, or if even you wanted to delay your approval on this matter or your action, I shouldn't be so presumptuous to think you're going to approve it, but if you wanted to delay it until after February 28th, so we give you a picture of the bracket and the stop sign installed, that's fine by us. The sign analysis, you had questions about the signage, we had the architect prepare the sign analysis for both frontages, and as you could see at the very top, it is compliant, the total surface area that's allowed of all signs, the very second row down on each page notes that 150 square feet is the maximum permitted, and as you could see from each of the forms, one frontage has 41 square feet, and I don't know which frontage that is, I apologize, I'm looking at now to determine that, and the second frontage has 149 square feet, both of which are less than the maximum required, 150 square feet, and they're also in compliance with the board's last approval as well.
Great.
The final question is really, I think, the one that we wanted to discuss with the board, which was the closing off of the area next to the residential, the parking area. I had made the suggestion at the last hearing, when there was some cause for concern about people that may park there and make noise at night, and somehow disturb the neighbors behind us, even though we've never had, Kenny hasn't been made aware of it, although somebody did come and speak last time and say it's a problem for them, we would like to close off that area at night, and Kenny is more than willing to accommodate the board's request on that. I know the board thought maybe we could put something more attractive than a chain, and we could.
I think it was a plastic chain.
Yeah.
Plastic chain sort of doesn't speak, you know, to, don't park here.
Right.
It just speaks to just break the chain and park there.
Well, yeah, and we don't think anybody's going to, I mean, he's on-site all the time, it's just his livelihood and it's what he does, so if somebody were to break the chain.
I mean, is there something about a plastic chain?
But, yeah.
And something that is more substantial?
We've got more ideas for you. The idea that, that we came up with was to have rolling planters, that he could have his staff roll out at night in addition to the chain, to close off the area, and if your board's satisfied with that.
As long as it's something that, you know, someone can't just simply.
We understand, and he doesn't need the spots at night, it's not as if, you know, in the evening, late evening hours, anybody that's filling up, you know, to the dinner rushes or when the parking lot fills up, so we'd be happy to do that. And I believe that, that was all of the requests of the board.
I think that's correct. Anybody else have anything? Thank you. Are there any speakers on this item? Um, okay, so, great, so if you could then do as suggested, which is after the stop sign is installed and the brackets removed, take a photograph?
We'd be happy to.
And so, given that it's scheduled to be at the end of February, if you could submit that material on the 13th of March?
That'd be great. Yes.
Okay, that way we could have a hearing on the 24th of March.
Great.
Or a decision, because we can close.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so, for motion to close?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Adley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number 17, 176 13 BZ, 31 Bond Street, Manhattan.
Richard Lobel, Sheldon Lobel, PC for the applicant, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Madam Chair, we had a representative at the executive session, we are thrilled that we have satisfied the board with regards to the dimensions of the building and the reduction of the FAR. We understand that there were still some discrete issues, one of those being application to DEP and necessary documentation, we've been in touch with staff with regards to that and are submitting something to them immediately, so as to evoke a response within the next several weeks, and we also know that there needs to be follow-up with landmarks, as you're aware, they'd initially approved the building, but we're waiting to see what was happening here, so we'll now re-approach landmarks and obtain that necessary approval such that the board can vote out the application.
Okay, so, so we can close, but we just need to set up a schedule, so I don't know how long it's going to take for you to get that stuff, so.
We initially thought that four weeks would be sufficient to provide the board with the necessary documentation, so I know that there's a, I know there's a March 10th hearing date, we feel that the end of February would be good for the submission, and then with the chance to maybe go over a little bit in the event that DEP didn't respond in exactly that timeframe.
Okay, so then you could submit ideally those responses from the other agencies by the 27th of February, for a decision on the 10th of March?
That's great.
And we can close. Any speakers? Do we, oh, are there any speakers on this item? Um, okay, so for a motion to close?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Adley Brown?
Aye.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Item number 18, 188 13 BZ and 189 13A, 20 day of court.
Morning, Todd Dale for the applicant.
Hi, I think you wanted to adjourn this?
Yes, we appreciate the board's patience with this, but the project architect and property owner are trying to rework the design with neighborhood character issues in mind. We're hopeful we can get a submission in the third week of February, so I don't know what the board's calendar or schedule works.
Um, I think we're into a hearing in March, so you could submit also on February 27th?
Okay.
For a hearing on March 10th? I think that's still working.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes.
Item number 19, 222, I'm sorry, keep jumping on.
Thank you.
Item number 19, 222 13 BZ, 2472 Coney Island Avenue, Brooklyn, we have received a request for an adjournment, I believe.
Right, and I would see, well, Mr. Pilatnik's going to come soon. So, what's this one?
You went from slow to very, very fast.
Yes. So, okay, so you had asked for four weeks?
Yes, please.
Does that sound right?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so, how are we doing on March 10th? Can we afford anymore? Okay, so we can do the same submission schedule, February 27th submission and a hearing on March 10th. That's much worth it.
Thank you.
Item number 23, 21 13 BZ, 37 1900 Fourth Street, Queens.
We could afford someone on March 3rd, okay. Um, okay, sorry, that one is, okay.
Ready?
Yeah.
Hi, Eric Pilatnik for the record. We attended your review session yesterday and we heard your board's questions, or the review session, I should say, on Monday, and if it's okay with the board, again, I've, we've jotted down the questions and we have some answers for you.
Great.
Your first question was, how many spaces need to be waived? And for clarification purposes, there are three spaces that we're requesting the waiver of. Second question you had related to the parking study, we had submitted to you documentation to show you that the study was conducted, I don't know if it actually said within the date and the time, but it was 3 o'clock on a Wednesday afternoon in which it was done. We felt that was representative of the average daily parking, if you'd like to see something in the evening hours, we could give you something that would be done, maybe between the hours of 6:00 to 7:00 when people are arriving home from work.
Yeah, that makes more sense, this is a residential neighborhood, I didn't really understand why 3 o'clock was picked, kids aren't even back from school yet.
We'll be happy to give it to you at 6:00 to 7:00 PM.
Uh-huh.
The next question the board had is, why can't we provide one to two spaces on the property? And the reason really comes back to the whole reason we're here, which is the narrow nature of the property, the minimum width of a driveway is eight feet, so in order for us to access even the rear yard to provide parking, the home would, the building would have to reduce to 17 feet in width, which is exactly what we're trying to avoid with this application.
There's no room in the front yard?
No, there's no space.
So, that's the part that's very unclear from the plan, the site plan, can't really tell where the property line ends and the sidewalk that's not part of the property.
We'll adjust it to show you.
Okay, so, but it's more than that, if you could just show on a, a plan where the parking would have to go, like, for instance, the rear yard's 38 feet, like, what if it were 30 feet, if you moved the house back eight feet, would you get enough front yard room to put one or two cars in the front?
If we moved it back?
Yeah.
Would you want to see the whole move back on the lot, or do you like it that it's aligned with everything?
Not necessarily, it has more to do with, you're asking to waive the parking, not sure why the parking needs to be waived without you showing.
Showing you the reason for it.
At the vicinity where, right? I mean, if it's, if, if moving it back eight feet doesn't provide for parking, and I don't see that neighborhood character is requiring the building be moved back, right? It looks like.
I understand.
The buildings are all in that kind of line, right?
Yeah, it's, it's very symmetrical in the fronts of most of the homes in the area.
Yeah, so it's, right, but it's supposed to be the minimum variance and maybe parking isn't needed.
We'd be happy to demonstrate that for the board, I understand your, your concerns. The next question you had is, can the lot be developed as a multifamily as of right? And the answer is yes, you can have a three-family in this district. The problem, of course, is that the yards, you can't have a two-family because we don't meet the minimum lot size in the district for a two-family, a single or a two-family, and we don't have the minimum frontage for a single or a two-family. So, that's how this application really came to be, we're boxed out of a single or a two-family because of lot size, and three families really wouldn't make more economic sense anyway, and that's allowed, but then we get boxed out of that because of the yards, so that's the reason why we're here.
So, that waiver, you would have qualified for the waiver if, if you'd only had room on the sides for the yards?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Okay.
And then you asked about jointly and separately owned, and as we had explained in our statement in section D of our statement of facts and findings, this property's always been independently developed upon with a single family, before it was a two-family home, excuse me, separate and apart from the home next door, it was under common ownership, but there were two individual structures on it, each having their own certificate of occupancy and each being their own dwelling units. So, that's the basis of our request to the Department of Buildings, and we feel that they will agree with us on that.
Right, I think that the reason with the, that I asked that question was because that's one of the criteria for the DOB waiver on the small lots, so that was the question, why can't you do this as of right, but even if you do qualify for individually owned and so on, it doesn't matter because you still have your side yard problem.
Still correct.
Okay, I see, okay.
And those were all the questions that we had taken notes on, I don't know, perhaps we may have missed something, but I think that's, after watching the video.
Anybody else have? Somebody else? Um, so are there, are there any speakers on this item? No, great, okay, so, um, if you could then provide us a drawing showing why the parking can't be.
We can, and redoing the parking as well, the parking study.
Yes.
We'd be happy to.
The parking study did have a little, have a better time, and I think that's it. And then, you know, modify your statement just to indicate about the answers to the other questions, just to respond to that in writing. So, on a similar schedule, only actually we do have room on March 3rd.
That's fine, that'll be fine.
So if you could submit on February 20th. And for, for a hearing on the 3rd.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 21, 327 13BZ, 1504 Coney Island Avenue, Brooklyn.
Good afternoon. Howard Goldman for the applicant. I think there were three issues raised at review session. Number one, I was hoping the traffic study would be perfect, but apparently it needs a little more work, so we will do that work and clarify the issue that was raised and resubmit that. Number two, we are in the process of obtaining a letter from our parking consultant, which will explain to the board how they will regulate who gets to use the garage and use by non-residents. And number three.
Non, non-clients, non-patrons.
Non-patrons, non-visitors to the premises. And number three, a sign at the exit of the garage prevents left turns. We will do that, that should be a condition of the board's approval, that's on our property, we don't need any approvals for that. And reach out to DOT when the garage is operational, we're more than glad to agree to do that.
Okay, great.
At the entrance and the exit?
Entrance and exit, thank you.
So that the entrance.
No illegal turns will be made.
Through the striping and all that stuff?
Right.
Right, okay. Any other questions, comments? Are there any speakers on this item? Okay, so, the reason, the parking study was just needing to beef it up, but I understand the results of the parking study, so I think actually as long as you give us all of that stuff, we can close this and, and schedule for a decision, okay? So for a motion to close.
Motion to close, Chair Perlmutter.
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson.
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez.
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown.
Aye.
Okay, and we can schedule a decision on, well, how much time do you need to do that stuff? Because the parking study needs to be beefed.
Two weeks, please.
Two weeks, okay. Yeah, and revise the facts and findings to incorporate that stuff? Is it still good, two weeks?
Two weeks.
Okay, so, under the new regime, a submission on Friday, the 13th? No, no versions intended? For a decision on the 24th of February.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 20. Item number 22, 5-14BZ, 1807 East 22nd Street, Brooklyn.
We were asked to adjourn this, Solomon's not here. Okay, so, we were asked to adjourn to the 24th, but we really can't do that. So we can adjourn to March 3rd with a submission of Friday, February 20th.
Item number 23, 1714BZ, 600 McDonald Avenue, Brooklyn.
Okay, we were asked to adjourn this for a submission date on March 24th, but in consistent keeping with the new idea, a submission on March 27th, which is a Friday, for a hearing on April 14th.
Item number 24, 2814BZ, 3540 Nostrum Avenue, Brooklyn.
Good afternoon, Todd Dale for the office of Eric Pilatnik. He had to leave and ask me to address some of the issues that came up in review session. First, the fence, there were photographs submitted of some of the slat changes. Just wanted to let you know that it looks like the person who installed the fence didn't finish some capping on the top of the fence that's supposed to take place, and the capping on the top of the fence should even out the slats and take care of what in the photographs makes it appear that there's some raggedness, but upon the fix of the capping, they'll submit new photographs to show. There's a question regarding the trash enclosure. Trash is covered and contained, they remove it every night except Sunday. There's also a question regarding the exterminator. They will, they have a letter from an exterminator, they're going to submit it with the next submission. The exterminator just did an examination and found no evidence of vermin around the area. They weekly make visits to look for vermin, and I guess they install certain types of rat traps around the, the food disposal area. Landscaping. The bushes are going to be shaped in spring, they've been told by their landscaper they shouldn't do it during the winter or it could damage and kill the bushes, but they are planning to do that. They're also willing, depending on the board's wishes, to install additional landscaping as required. Again, they likely wouldn't be able to plant that till the spring, summer, but they could put a note on the plan regarding additional landscaping to be installed. And then I think the final issue that was raised was regarding the sound level on the menu board. Sound level on the menu board is a manual sound, but as a practice, the employees of the restaurant go out after the dinner rush, which is usually 7:00 P.M., and will turn the volume down. To this point, they've had no complaints from the surrounding neighborhood, as to the community board or to the Department of Buildings. They don't expect or anticipate any complaints because it has been at use in operation, and, you know, they'll continue to turn the volume down.
Can it be made automatic? Because you've heard of other McDonald's that where it's automatic.
Right. At this point, I think it would require a significant redo of the entire menu board, so they're reluctant to do it this time because it would be a significant cost to tear down the menu board and come up with a whole new system, and, you know, to that.
Just on the speakers? It's not just the speakers that are installed that are on?
I would be lying to you if I was saying it was an audio technician.
Okay.
That's what's written to us. But, you know, to that point, what I would say is that, you know, if there were a history of complaints here, you know, I, I believe that it would definitely warrant it to change over the system, but absent any complaints that have been registered either with the board, the community board, and their regular practice, we think that, you know, would continue.
Did you give us the community board resolution?
That I do not know, I'll pass it on to the office.
I'm pretty sure they did, and there was approval.
I'll make sure.
Okay, great. Any other questions, comments? Any speakers on this item? Okay, so, I know you can't speak for how well Eric can submit, but he's been okay so far, so.
I would suggest any schedule that's comparable to maybe one of the previous cases.
Right, okay, except to say that they have to install, like, we really do want photographs of the caps installed, yeah.
I would say that would take at least two weeks, so, you know, any submission scheduled provides, that time should be fine.
After that, okay, so, submission on the 20th of February?
Okay.
That's three weeks. For a hearing on March 3rd.
March 3rd, okay.
Item number 25, 6314BZ, 5500 Broadway, The Bronx.
Good morning, Todd Dale for, excuse me, good afternoon, Todd Dale for the applicant. We did request an adjournment.
Because you need DOI and fire department.
DOI, forms have been submitted, and I believe that they may be, you know, the reviewer of the report may be back soon. The other information we actually have in hand and will be able to submit very quickly. So, a short submission.
Very quickly, unfortunately, it's only a physical fitness thing, so maybe we can do that. How quickly is quickly?
By the end of next week. Or the end two weeks.
So by Friday the 6th?
Friday the 6th or the 13th, depending on what's better for you.
Okay, that puts us again at the 24th. Is it getting possible? I think it's just because it's getting to be too much, let's just move it to the 3rd, March 3rd, so a submission on February 20th, Friday, for a hearing on March 3rd. It's just that the 24th is now.
Understood, and that should give plenty of time to Department of Administration.
Okay, great.
Item number 26, 14114BZ, 2465 Broadway, Manhattan.
Good afternoon, Todd Dale for the applicant. From review session, I know that there was a question regarding the, the fire department. We did submit after review session earlier this week, taking advantage of the gap between the review session and the hearing. A plan with the revised note, it just looks like the note was missing a few lines, but it's the full, complete standard BSA note.
Okay, great, so, I think that was the only comment, that it had to pick up that, so I can, I, we can obviously close this. So, first, are there any speakers on the item? So we can close this, so for motion to close.
Chair Perlmutter.
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson.
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez.
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown.
Aye.
For a decision on the 10th, okay? For a decision on February 10th.
Excellent, thank you.
Keep going? Yep, um, no, now I think we could, sorry, take a lunch break, but we're going to do it fast, 20 minutes. Sorry to those who are still here spooking it out. My phone here pretty well. Okay, so, five after two, maybe? Is that good? Yeah?
Camera, camera.
Josh, could you get the camera, thanks?
We're back on the record for the public hearing of January 30th, 2015, on the zoning calendar. New cases, item number 1, 4414BZ, 92 Lake Street, Manhattan.
Richard Lobell, Sheldon Lobell, P.C. for the applicant. Good afternoon. We had a representative at the board's executive session on Monday, and understood that there were a number of comments with regards to the application. The first item I noted is that this was, the property was previously the subject of a variance application, which was granted in 2000. The area of the premises in question was part of a larger approval in an M district for residential use. The variance plans contemplated commercial use group six use in the space for which we now seek a PCE. At direction of the board, we filed a letter of substantial compliance application. I think that the board asked in the hearing that we were, or in the executive session, that we reflect the materials to reflect that filing, we will do so.
Right, and the statement of fact.
Correct.
Right.
The, and, and ask the board's consideration over the fact that this is a rescheduled hearing, I was unable to have certain of our professionals attend the hearing, but we'd be happy to answer some of these questions in writing, particularly the architectural questions relating to the, the details regarding the construction here and why they feel that the noise attenuation that's actually provided by the building is sufficient, as well as the substantive, substantive question regarding LPC sign-off. My understanding is that the architect is going to respond to both of these to the satisfaction of the board, but I can give that board that on the next submission. The, as far as the, the noise and whether the attenuation is sufficient, the gym has been operating at the premises for over a year. We have not had any material noise complaints. We had individuals from the building attend the community board hearing and speak in favor of this, so, including people who lived adjacent to the premises. So it's really a well-liked PCE within the building, and we don't, we're not presented with many of the similar issues as are for other PCEs. But we can further document that and provide discussion to the board, as well as identify the notification measures that we did comply with.
But I understood there was a need to re-notify?
A need to re-notify in the initial hearing because you got it late and there wasn't enough the 20 days?
Right.
But also, Madam Chair wanted the tenants in the building to be notified?
Okay, so we'll consult with staff and re-notify for, for both affected property owners as is necessary, as well as tenants as is required. Okay, and we'll consult. So, in, in specific response, there have been no complaints raised regarding noise to, to our best of knowledge, but, you know, we can confirm that, and again, notification will go a long way to, to making sure that that's the case. Finally, I'd add that the FEIS that was issued in conjunction with the prior approval was the change which is sought here, which is for a PCE use in the commercial space, we don't believe impacts any of the identified FEIS categories, which vary, but are typical things you'd find, archaeological and items of that nature, which wouldn't be impacted by this proposed change in use. But, again, Ms. Matias did ask us to specifically address that, and we can address that in the next submission.
Great.
Okay.
And there was also a question about the rec, space on the ground floor?
That I'm going to have to look at, and I'd be happy to answer that as well.
Okay, and we do have DOI and fire department sign off on this, right?
Yep.
And, okay.
Okay.
Were there any other comments? Great, thank you. Were, are there any speakers on this item? Great, so, how much time do you need?
I really think it's more of a function of what the chair deems sufficient and necessary notice, such that by the time that everyone's notified, we'll have, we'll have all the materials we need. So if it's, if it's three weeks, then three weeks is great for us.
Okay, so three weeks, so then, so first, will that work then for a submission on February 20th? Is that too much?
Probably, probably, I don't know, is there, is there a, I think we had used February 27th as a date?
Yeah, it's just that we don't have room really on the 10th anymore, right?
How about the service?
On March 10th? We could, because it's just a few.
But on the 3rd?
On the 3rd, oh, you mean just, and that only gives us, so how about a submission on the 24th instead in this case? One exception, just for you.
Okay.
February 24th, submit for a hearing on the 3rd. Okay? And if you could submit actually on the 23rd, that might make it even better.
On the 23rd?
Yeah.
I think that's fine.
I hope that helps you, because it's only the weekend that you get.
No, it's the, I'm just thinking three, 20 days is, is February 3rd to provide notice, so I think that that gives us an acceptable timeframe.
Think it'll work?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Um, I guess the only question I'd have is, is procuring, we already have obviously a property owner's list, but as far as additional tenants are concerned, I think in similar cases, we've posted in the building and.
I think that's fine. Posted in the mailroom is fine.
Okay, great, great.
Right?
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds fantastic, okay.
Okay, terrific. I mean, I'd say, post it in the mailroom, but make special efforts to let the people who are immediately above the gym know, maybe slip it under the doors of the people on the next floor.
Fine.
That's easy enough to do? I don't have any tenants, girl? Great.
Okay.
Okay, so, not sure if, okay, so we, so a hearing on, sorry, submission, say on the 24th? You can do it for a hearing on the 3rd.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Can we close this?
Want to close it?
Can we close this? Are there open issues?
I don't have any other.
No, what, sorry?
I said there could be.
There could be, so let's see if it opens. Okay, yeah, yeah, notification, we can't close, right, right, okay.
Maybe a closing grant? That's, thank you.
Right, could be.
Okay.
Item number 4, 21614BZ, 150 Amsterdam Avenue, Manhattan.
Good afternoon, Jay Goldstein for the applicant. I attended Monday's review session. We submitted to the board the plans for the sound attenuation with all the notes. As can be seen, the measures taken actually exceed in some measure the notes on the plans. There was another question with regard to the signage. Section 3464, the first, section 3464 mentions that when you have multiple establishments on a single, of a single building, each establishment is considered its own zoning lot for surface area. Therefore, a 56-foot frontage would be allowed 168 feet or 150 feet max per the chart at section 34642. So therefore, the 150 noted would be just for our establishment, it's not for the entirety of the.
It's not for the entire?
No, it's not, it's just our, our establishment, because our establishment for the, for the purposes of that section is a zoning lot.
But actually, it's not that everyone gets 150 square feet, that's the maximum if you have enough.
Correct, that's the maximum.
Right.
It's each establishment is, is viewed as itself, it's three times your frontage or 150-foot maximum.
And what's your frontage?
56 feet.
Oh, okay, so then you get there.
So, we're compliant.
But since you're also a separate lot.
The 56 feet, it allows us, because we're considered a separate zoning lot, 56 feet allows us 168 square feet.
Right.
But the section limits us to 150.
Right.
Because of, you know, that's their, their limit.
Yeah, I was just.
So therefore, I understand it's confusing and.
Yeah, just clarifying that it wasn't for the entire frontage, otherwise then.
No, it's not.
The commercial space would have absolutely no square footage.
But they had the entire.
Right, we'd still be compliant, but that's not the way it's interpreted.
Okay, good, and I do thank you for providing those details about the interesting sound box that they create. I actually learned a lot from that because on the Spin Studios, and I have understood that the Spin Studios with the competitor, for instance, with SoulCycle, they always have these boxes that are floating inside of the room.
Right.
And you see that they sit on isolators, there's like tons of sheet rock and plywood and all that stuff. I, I learned a lot from that.
It was trial and error until we found the sweet spot of keeping our noise so it doesn't bother anyone else, and we've had no complaints at this location.
Great, okay. Okay, any other issues on this? Okay, so, you already, that was a formal submission that you made.
Yes.
Are you okay with the sign? And you didn't make a submission on the signs, it's just a clarification.
It was clarification, I don't think it needs.
I think that's okay.
Okay.
It's just what the zoning resolution says.
Right.
So I think we can close this. So for a motion, oh, are there any speakers? Larry asked that. So for a motion to close.
Chair Perlmutter.
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson.
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
So I think, can we handle a vote on the 10th?
On the 3rd.
On the 3rd? Okay, vote on the 3rd. What is, the 3rd is, no, 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 the 3rd, that's not enough time.
3rd is Tuesday. He doesn't have to review.
We don't have to review anything.
I don't have to do anything.
Then we'll remember. Yes, good idea. Vote on the 3rd.
February 3rd?
Thank you, John.
Yeah, because this way we don't have to review the application all over again from scratch. We know what we're looking for. Okay, great.
Sounds good.
Okay. And then we were going to do another one with you, right?
Ready?
Okay.
Item number 5, 21714BZ, 245 West 17th Street, Manhattan.
Good afternoon, Jay Goldstein for the applicant. Again, we've, with this application as well, submitted the details for the sound attenuation. The extra layer of gypsum board, which was commented at the hearing, this space was built after 150 Amsterdam, and it was determined, just based on this particular space, that an extra layer can't hurt. So therefore, we put it in, and it's installed, and we have had no complaints on this as well.
Right.
And to the comment regarding the community board letter, this space is three doors down from Brick Fitness, so our community board was slightly on edge with another PCE. So while there were no complaints and no speakers in opposition, and they actually came and inspected our location, they still, I think that's going to be their new, you know, line on their approvals.
Okay, it's, just for everybody to remind that they had a condition, noise be carefully controlled so as not to disturb the neighbors and so on. So, okay, great. So, and I saw with that one, the ceiling is amazing. It's like, it's really six layers of sheet rock. It's like three on the bottom, then the ceiling, and then three on top. Yeah, okay.
We're trying to be good neighbors.
So maybe brick still doesn't have enough on their ceiling. Anyway, never mind. So, are there any speakers on this item? So for a motion to close?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Okay, and so we can set this for a decision on Tuesday, on the 3rd?
Thank you very much.
No submission?
No submission.
I made the submission already.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Appreciate it, and thank you for your accommodation.
Sure.
Okay. Item number 6?
Six or...
Wait, no, go back to number 2.
I thought we had one more PCE.
No, we have one more PCE.
Two more PCEs.
I'm sorry.
Two more PCEs.
Sorry, sorry. Item number 6?
60.
22214BZ, 344 East 63rd Street, Manhattan.
Sheldon Lobel?
Richard.
Everyone's confused. Sorry. I'm missing a term.
Richard Lobel, Shell Nobel PCE for the applicant.
So with this one, you provided the drawing that shows, I missed, you know, when I was reading the statement of facts, there was confusion that it seemed like it was, there was an R8 district and a C2 district. But in fact, they're both C2 districts.
Correct.
And I didn't realize that even though it's a split lot, it doesn't matter at all with respect to the special permit, so I didn't, and they provided massage licenses for a lot of muscles. So, it's a busy place.
It is.
Yes.
I got a coupon in the mail for it.
We are, we will make sure to operate in complete compliance with the law.
Yeah, absolutely. So, okay, so then for, are there speakers on this item? So for a motion to close?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
So we can, we can have the same, so decision on March 3rd.
Thank you.
February 3rd or March 2nd? I'm sorry, February 3rd.
3rd.
Sorry, sorry.
Better.
Item number 7, 24614BZ, 210 J. Rolloman Street, Brooklyn.
Good afternoon, Todd Dale for the applicant. Based on comments from review session, we tried to rush in a submission, provide the LPC approval for the interior space, which was requested. We also put the sound attenuation note on the plans, and just described that the sound is, you know, they typically do the mounted speakers, they put baffle line, and they also do this box within box construction, which is typical of the...
Right, but you didn't provide that material, unfortunately. So the thing that was so great about the last submission, the Flywheel submission, was that they actually submitted the plans and details to show that it's a box within a box. This just has a note that says, you know, the sound will achieve 45 dBA, but that's not, dBA is not actually what the problem is for the most part with these gyms. It's the vibration, and I understand that the cycling centers, the spin centers, really vibrate. And I know that it's SoulCycle standard to do this, but you didn't show any of that. So what we really need is the drawings that I know already exist, that shows the details. So if, I mean, they already exist, so if you could just submit the drawings that show the details for that isolated box, then we know that you've actually achieved that kind of separation that's needed.
I would say, though, that since we've had no complaints, going forward, since we do a lot of these PCEs, is this going to be a standard board procedure where they're going to request drawings of this sort for all PCEs, or just spin cycles?
Well, no, spin studios are specifically very noisy. So are, so are Crossfits. But spin studios, I know, are very noisy, and Flywheel has standard plans, and we've seen them from SoulCycle as well, represented by others. So standard, standard submission. If you made a phone call today, I'm sure you could even get it in time perhaps for Monday, you know?
Sure, just trying to understand what the parameters are going to be for different types of PCEs.
Right.
Yeah, we could submit that within a week.
Okay, that's perfect. So, okay, are there speakers? Are there any other comments? Speakers? No speakers? So yes, so if you could submit that...
The violations, oh, sorry. The violations?
Here, responding to the violations.
Sorry about that.
That's fine. And we notify the city again to let them know the city agency needs to chase down the city agency. And wish them luck.
So crazy. Oh, and just, the thing that wasn't really clear is the CNE from LPC is a little bit old, so that, what wasn't really clear was, is that the exact same space, interior partitions?
There have been no changes proposed to the space of this particular, I know for other SoulCycles we've changed it around, but the operator let me know that that's the one that they're...
That's what they're doing.
That's what they're doing.
Okay, so then, if you could submit, yeah, for the hearing on the 10th? Yeah, so submit, if you can submit on Tuesday the 3rd, you think you can do that?
Yes.
Okay.
With March and February, I'm getting confused with, yes, Tuesday the 3rd, for sure.
Yeah, February the 3rd.
Okay.
For a hearing on the 10th, we might even be able to do a closed grant then.
Will, a closed grant is possible?
Yeah.
On the 10th?
Yeah. Especially if what you show us is good, which we expect to see.
Okay, excellent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item number 2, 14814BZ, 11 Avenue A, Manhattan.
Richard Lobel of Shell Nobel PCE for the applicant. Madam Chair, this is an initial hearing on this matter, which is a variance. We had a representative at the executive session yesterday. Again, I apologize for both Robert Strong, my architectural professional, as well as Barbara Cohen, our financial analyst, are both unable to attend the hearing today because of the rescheduling. They have both informed me that they'd be able to respond in writing to any issues that were raised at the executive session, as well as at this hearing. But just by way of a general background, we have a site here at 11 Avenue A, which is approximately 18 feet 8 inches wide and about 80 feet deep, giving it a rather small and narrow floor plate. We've looked at a land use study of the area, availed ourselves of the board's pre-application procedure, performed a larger land use study, and essentially showed that of the 250 or greater lots in the area, that we are in the lowest 4% with regards to frontage, with regards to the size of the lot, and also the use. Many of those 27-some-odd lots, which were our size or smaller, really had already waived, so to speak, the density requirements, and had a larger number of residential units there. So that leaves us with this building, where we have a three-story commercial building, underutilized, which sits, I believe, vacant for a number of years. And so the owner is attempting to receive a waiver of 2332 from the board. I know that the board had questions with regards to the size of the units, and I think that both Ms. Cohen and Mr. Strong would like to respond to that. My understanding is that the owner here has extensive experience in the area, having rented to other individuals in the area before, and knows that there is a great demand for students in the area for these types of units. And so, as a character finding, as a matter of a C finding, if we showed typical unit sizes in this area on Avenue A here, we are going to find that there are indeed a lot of these smallish 400 or 500 square foot units. Moreover, for me...
Sorry, but they're in tenement buildings that were built in the 19th century or whatever.
Understood. Understood, but I think that, I think part of it is a function of the zoning and the density requirements here, and that were this building not hamstrung by 2332, and were you able to have a multiple dwelling, you would be able to have up to 11 units of the property. And we're not seeking that, we're seeking these...
How so?
If you apply the density factor to the square footage. And again, we're going to respond to that, and the architect will be happy to...
But that would be if you, for whatever reason I don't understand, this isn't being built full.
Correct.
This is only being built to a relatively small floor area.
This is something we'd like to fully submit to the board on. Understood, the question's understood, and we'll respond to it completely.
Okay, but the other part of the question is, you know, the units are between 400 and 450 square feet without an elevator.
Right.
How in the world is that happening?
The architect has also said that he is, he will be able to fully respond in writing to the lack of an elevator here. He says that we satisfy accessibility requirements. And I understand that the board would be unable to grant in violation of code requirements. He said that we're going to be able to submit to the satisfaction of the board. I had him here at the hearing, and unfortunately, he had to leave prior to the hearing.
Okay, but, I mean, with respect to that, it says right there in section 1101.3, that when you are, there's a change of the main use and occupancy, the handicap requirements apply, and the building has to have an elevator. It just says that. So what do we do? I mean, we're not going to be able to make a determination based on the architect's say-so, so from the respect of an elevator in this building, I think that's a DOB call, and we're not going to be able to...
Upon our information, the architect has already reached out to Department of Buildings, and has worked on many buildings like this, and has also had discussions with the Office of Disabilities, the Mayor's Office of Disabilities, and will provide us with proper documentation. And I understand, we obviously can't ask the board to violate anything, to prove something in violation of law. But I would note that the small unit sizes here, in addition to being a function of the market in this area, there's also a discussion in the papers, which we will elaborate upon, that this unit size and count minimizes the risk of the owner here, in that if two duplexes, for example, were provided, should one of those be unrented? Should the resident break the lease? Then the owner is left really with the building, which is 50% unoccupied, whereas a larger number of units allows him to minimize that risk and to enable a continuation of the return on the building.
Empty apartments in this neighborhood? Huh?
Well, we look forward to submitting to the satisfaction of the Chair.
Okay, so, but then the other question is, why, the other part of the question is, not even a why, it seems when I did my own math, four simplex units gets you your rate of return. Four simplex units are in the sort of 900 square feet minus all of the, all of the core, and assuming there's an elevator, because it's so confusing that there's no elevator, now you're in the realm of, you know, small apartments that can be shared with roommates or a family can live in. So this idea of, I have a lot of trouble with this, because this is not a micro unit, you're not trying to, it's not an affordable unit, not getting what the rationale is for these teeny units. Teeny nasty.
I think we can, I think we can, we would dispute the term nasty, but we would, we would provide sufficient documentation to the board with regards to the justification for the, for the unit sizes. And again, again, no waivers sought with regards to the actual size of the units, it's just merely with the permission to use this for multifamily.
Well, actually, there, it's the permission to use it for a multiple, multifamily, because the site is too small to be allowed to be used for a multifamily.
But it's not, it's not a function of the unit sizes themselves.
No, but then you had this, if it had been the right size to use for a multiple family, then you would have had the 740 square feet per dwelling unit in functioning, because that's how it works.
I think, I think that the, if this building were built full, I think that the, the number of units would, would, we'd be permitted to exceed this number of units. So I don't think that this is a...
It would be permitted to exceed six, because you'd have a lot more floors.
But I think that the, but I think that the density here is not simply a function of, it's not simply a function of this amount of square footage, it's a function of applying the density factor to the buildable on this site. Regardless, understood, regardless, I would say that, that again, the waiver that saw 2332 merely does not permit you to do multifamily on a lot size of less than 1,500. That doesn't involve a function of the sizes of the units themselves.
That's true, but we're guided by another aspect of the zoning that has a policy where it's trying to encourage units that are not substandard, and when you're talking about 740 square feet, that's not actually in the unit. That includes the core, the elevators, and all that, and you're way below that, so, right? So...
Also, we're supposed to find a minimum variance, and increasing the number of units increases the noncompliance.
Which we think is a function of the finances here and not of the, of the unit sizes. We think that the B finding...
It's a minimum variance finding.
But we think that the B finding bears out here, and, and again, we'll fully submit. Understand that, understanding that this needs to be fleshed out, I think that the, at the core of the application, we do have an undersized building, we do have a, an undersized lot, and we have a building which we are, and again, we will justify, being unable to build out to greater floor area, but that this unit, these types of units, and this type of waiver is something which is not atypical for the area.
So if you want to speed this process up?
Yes, Madam Chair.
So that we're not here like three times, having the same argument?
Correct.
I'd really recommend that you provide a four simplex unit solution, probably with an elevator, so that we don't have to go back to DOB and find out how in the world you don't have an elevator in the building, and not even sure it's a good public policy to build new residential without an elevator? So that would speed things up.
Understood. We'll, but I would say, I would say that we will provide the necessary plans, but I would say that to the extent that we are able to proceed without an elevator, we would fully document that to the board, to their satisfaction. So we don't, we do not want to belabor this issue, but message received.
Okay.
I also think in terms of the C finding, you know, just adding two floors to a very plain frontage that you already have, doesn't really blend in well with the neighborhood. I mean, the buildings on either side have a certain character.
Sure. We'll note that to the architect.
Because even tenements, by the way, were built with great fashion and style.
Of course.
Learn from at least your antique elders.
Well, understood.
Okay.
We will make sure to review that with the architect.
Okay, so I think, since you're also going to be providing the simplex solution, you're going to need some time to do this. So, is a month, or no?
I think a month is sufficient.
No, wait, sorry, I'm sorry.
I still have some questions.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Too late.
I wanted to just say with the uniqueness finding, the property right next door actually is a little bit narrower than yours, and I know you mentioned in the uniqueness study that you're one of like two or three lots that are small. Could you just include in your statement just a reference to the fact that you're acknowledging that the building to your right, if you're facing it, is equally as small and underdeveloped?
Sure. Sure.
And maybe distinguish yourself from it, if, I don't know if they do have residential already, or, or what, that would really help me.
I'll review that. I know that one of the adjacent lots has six residential units, so if anything, that would probably help our...
Right, it might actually help your case.
...developer case. Okay, thank you.
Didn't you also have a comment about cap rates?
Well, I had, yeah, just a couple of questions about the financials that I had stated in review session, but I could restate it here. One had to do the site, with the site value, and the way in which the adjustments were made to account for the fact that there are excess development rights...
Sure.
...on this site, but you don't really state whether or not there are excess development rights on the other sites, because they look like they're similarly underdeveloped.
Oh.
So if there are, then you don't need to adjust the price upwards, you can just take that adjustment out, which would lower the site value.
Okay.
That's one of them. And then in your as-of-right, both of your bedroom schemes, even though they're varying sizes, have the same rent.
Okay.
And if you could talk about your choice of cap rates, because residential in Manhattan is really a, a low-risk situation, and so therefore, the rates possibly could go lower, so if they can be justified or tweaked or lowered.
Okay.
That's it?
Okay. Is there any speakers on this? Okay, so, I'm thinking you don't have enough time for the March 3 hearing, probably, because you'd have to submit by the 20th, that's probably not enough.
The 20th? I just want to ensure that to the extent that there is further discussion about the, the accessibility, that we have sufficient time to go to whoever we need to go to.
So I think we, the 10th, the March 10 hearing is now full, so we're up to the 24th.
Oh, wow.
So that, that's why.
I guess the, well...
Ample time.
That is ample time.
Ample time to respond very perfectly to all the questions.
I understand that, okay.
With a really gorgeous building that we love, that's not going to threaten the life, the lives and health of the tenants.
We look forward to a very complete submission on the, in April.
Okay, so the hearing on the 24th, submission on March 13th, which is a Friday.
Oh, so a March 13 submission and a hearing on...
Then March 24th.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name's Ally Carrery, I'm attorney with Greenberg Chart for the applicant. I was in attendance for the review session on Monday, and as many of the comments from the commissioners related to the design of the building, including some, talking about input we received from LPC, a certain design feature and the depth of the rear yard, we thought the best way to address these questions would be to have Morris Ajmi, the architect on this project, address those comments.
Good afternoon, thank you.
State your name, if I could, again.
Yes, my name is Morris Ajmi, I'm the architect for the project. There were three questions that I wanted to address. One was the dialogue that we had with landmarks regarding the setback, second was the sloped sidewalls, and the third was the rear yard depth. Start with the setback. I, I had met with Sarah Carroll, who was the director of preservation at the time, and she clearly conveyed to us that there would be no support for a setback solution, which we, which we feel is consistent with other instances when we have met with landmarks regarding setting back a building of that scale on, on the site in a historic district. I also think that the straight street wall is consistent. Sing a song for you. The straight street wall is consistent with other loft buildings in the district, specifically in the neighborhood and in the district, and so we propose to go straight up. In addition to that, we are proposing for the sloped walls, or canted walls as we refer to it, in the C of A, which we feel creates this projecting bay, which is consistent with other buildings in the district, and specifically historic hotel structures, which had projecting bays, and in many times, a series of projecting bays. And I have the, does, C of A, and it stated that the canting back of the masonry sidewalls is a contemporary device which creates a suggestion of projecting bay at the front facade, a distinctive feature of many late 19th century and early 20th century buildings in the district. And then, the last point that I wanted to bring up was related to the depth of the building. In both our as-of-right, as well as the proposed, we showed the rear yard with a approximately, it's 29 feet, but since, since the rear yard, which you see here. If we increase the building depth, and I don't know if everybody can see that, if we, if we increase the building depth so that that rear yard was 20 feet, we'd be increasing the building to about, by about nine feet, it really just creates two areas that would be, we can't increase the number of rooms in the, in the hotel, and in fact, we would be adding some floor area, which may or may not be useful in the rooms, however, we would be reducing the floor, the number of floors by at least one or one and a half floors, and that would eliminate four to six rooms. And since we're very, very, the numbers are very tight, and we're asking for the additional two rooms, we think that would not make sense for this project. And that's all I have.
Okay, I think the other question had to do with an explanation for the, because one of the waivers that you're seeking is that, that little bit of rear yard, I mean, of side yard.
Right.
And so you were going to, you need to address like why that's something that's needed for, for the viability of the hotel. I mean, it's not just that, that LPC likes it, but you know, that there's something about the viability of the hotel that would be improved because of this.
Yeah, okay, okay, yeah.
Yeah, we, we think that because of the location in this historic district, we really needed to put forth an important design feature for this building in order to compete with the other really well-known and established hotels in this area. The Nomad Hotel is right on our block, the Ace Hotel is just a block up. You know, as we showed in our, in our A finding, there are not very many sites in this district, especially sites as small as ours, that aren't contributing buildings. So in order to kind of fit in with the overall market of hotels in this district, which is becoming, you know, a very large hotel district, we thought that it was really necessary to put forth a design feature that was distinctive in order to create this as a hotel that could be considered designer and draw, draw customers.
And is there any benefit also, because like you can see at the corner, up and down the avenue?
Yeah, I was going to talk a little bit about that. Yeah, I think that one of the, I didn't want to really get too, get into the design too much, but this does recall the angle of Broadway, but it also does create a series of instances where you can see up and down Broadway on both sides, and we think that increases the value of the hotel in general, but specifically those rooms in the hotel.
What is the possibility of the two adjacent buildings being developed in such a way that it would sort of cut off your, your, you know...
I think you would still have views, even if those buildings were built. The building to the south of us, believe it or not, is a historic structure that was covered with some, and just recently restored, so I don't believe that there are any plans for that building to be built.
And it's a contributing building, it's listed as a style?
It, it, well, it did have a style at one time, but it's completely, it has been completely camouflaged by the existing metal siding and brick that was put on the building. So I think if they took, remove that, there was, there is some historic...
No, but in other words, it's listed as a contributing building, or as a style building?
I, I'm, I'm not sure. We can check on that.
If you could address that.
We can address that.
So you, so you don't, you don't believe that either building would be developed in such a way that would prevent...
I mean, it's possible, but we, we, even if they were, I don't think that it would affect the functioning of those two gestures, or one gesture on both sides. That's it.
I was also just going, going to add that, in terms of the neighborhood character, obviously, either building, if it was developed, would be reviewed by LPC for any major addition, that would change things. So we don't think that, you know, we think that whatever they decided was consistent with the streetscape would not, you know, would not damage kind of what, what we've done with the design.
So in other words, once, once built, you'd still, if, if either of those two sides were built higher, it wouldn't affect the, the view up and down Broadway?
I think you'd still get a view, et cetera.
Okay.
Right. But yeah, but we, in addition, we think that the effect of the building would, would still be able to read as a, you know, a nod towards the projecting bay feature.
Right, and it would still read as a distinctive building, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
There were also questions about the financial analysis, so Jessica Chorus from JS Freeman and Associates will address those questions.
Hi, good afternoon, I'm Jessica Chorus from JS Freeman Associates, it's good to see everyone. Happy Friday.
And you too.
Thank you. We were at the executive session earlier this week, and we understood that there are about six half dozen comments that we came to clear up today. The first was that you very astutely observed there was a difference between the gross and the zoning, and we checked with the architect, and it should be 24,740, both for the gross and the zoning and the as-of-right development, and the net hotel area adds up to 13,080 square feet. That's slightly different than what we had in our economic analysis, and we'd be happy to correct it for the record. The second point is, you asked for an explanation of the assumptions we used to derive the income in the profit and loss statement and the soft cost schedule B. And this is a whole list of different items, and we'll have to provide this in writing to you. We understand also that there were, there was a question on the income to, in the cellar and the restaurant, and the restaurant on the ground floor was assumed to be $150 a square foot, and the cellar kitchen was included, and it was assumed to be $75 a square foot.
So it's an extra 75 above the 150?
Correct.
So 150 for grade and 75 for cellar?
For below, correct. And now, we also included income for the, on the pro forma and on the profit and loss statement that you noticed, and the restaurant would be leased to an independent operator. They would pay rent to the property owner, and it would be the 150 for the ground floor, 75 for the kitchen, and it, the restaurant would be open to the public. It'd be a separate business entity, but anyone could come in and eat at that restaurant. Now, at the same time, the hotel would be a patron of that restaurant. They would have some sort of arrangement where the, you know, it's your first day in the city, you come down, you want your pancakes, you don't want to go down the street searching for a croissant or a coffee, you just go to the hotel restaurant. There would be a, a income and an expense to the hotel through this arrangement, and that we've included in our profit and loss statement. The hotel report that we used to determine the average daily rate, Smith Travel, only went through the year 2013. And Commissioner Utley-Brown, we just wanted to understand your comment a little better, and find out why you're looking to extend this, update the STAR report to the end of 2014.
Oh, the reason why is because I wanted to know, I saw the trend looked like it was going up, and I wanted to know whether or not that trend continued, and did it continue at the same rate, which would make your assumptions more accurate, or might it have taken a jump? And so I figured if I can get the latest data, I can figure that out.
Okay, so, we're just, we're, typically, when we filed the application, the reason we're asking is that the date and the data that we submit are frozen in time, and we're just, if we look at the new data, and we'd be happy to look at the new data, we, we'll need to examine the other assumptions in that same context, so...
In terms of the other report?
Yeah.
That's, that's actually fine, because that'll just give us an idea if you guys are on point in terms of your projections for your stabilized year and everything.
Sure.
So what you're saying is by, because everything else was timed at 2013, end of 2013, so if you adjust for average daily rate, then you have to adjust for whatever other factors you might have to...
The new reports that have all...
Right, and the PricewaterhouseCoopers report, which comes to my other question, which was, how are you reconciling those reports?
Right, so since STAR's not a projection, it's more of a current statement of the facts, of the data set that we selected, and PricewaterhouseCoopers and HVS provide the market analysis, they're, they're providing slightly different information. We can only look at the current facts of what's been happening and what the, and what PricewaterhouseCoopers and HVS are also projecting. So to determine the appropriate occupancy rate, we take into account these current rates, but also the relationship that the current rates look, how they're trending into the future, how they looked in the past, and what other market forces are, particularly other supply coming in. And we have seen, and we think that other experts are agreeing, that the occupancy rates are at a very high level right now, and they can't be sustained as new supply is entering the market. In our response, in October, we provided the lodging, the PWC lodging index, that showed all these hotels that are planned for opening and planned in the permitting process, and it, there's a fair amount that are going to be coming online. So we feel that the 90% is unsustainable, and that 85% for the stabilized year is about right. Okay? So, any other questions?
No, thank you. So you'll just write up all that stuff?
Absolutely.
And you're going to be providing, because that's my new thing, of trying to understand how you arrive at each of those soft costs, each, what the multipliers are, all of that, so the assumptions that you make, just some kind of a backup shape sheet that says, these are the assumptions we make?
Sure.
And those are what we multiply by, whatever we multiply it by.
Happy to do that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, issues? Is that...
That's all for me.
Great, thank you. Are there any speakers on this item? Okay. So, not sure how much time, it's mostly...
I think we need two weeks to respond.
Two weeks? Okay, well, we could also, two weeks, February 24th, so we have, February 24th. It's good?
For a hearing, or...
For the, for, for hearing, yeah, no, home, right? So, okay, so then we can have March 3 as the hearing date, and March, and February 20th as the submission date, and that's a Friday.
Okay.
Right? Good? Great, thank you very much.
This concludes the public hearing for January 30, 2015.
Thank you, everybody.
We'll be back here Monday.
Yeah, see you on Monday.